Call this meeting to order. Please silence all your electronic devices and stand for the invocation by Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please join me in the Our Father, Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but towards evil. The pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Other comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium over there in the corner of the room. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On the first ballot, it means you have 30 seconds left. Please finish it up because on the second ballot, I will stop you.
Betty Carr?
I deal here Elizabeth and Betty Carr. Kind of new to the area, just here two years. I'm also the market manager, and I love this job.
Where did you live? I didn't hear what you said.
I live at 46 Burnett Avenue in Batavia.
You can take that off while you're up there. It's okay. Thank you.
It kills the lipstick, too. I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I'd like to find a path forward to keep the market at the current site. So I'm here to ask your guidance and consideration in agreeing that the department, the police department, should find a different home. Each of you will soon has in front of you survey results from Field and Fork Network, which is a New York State food stamp program. Field and Fork is credited for doubling, even tripling some numbers this year. These results show that 73% of our customers walk or bike to the market, including senior citizens who enjoy their independence by shopping at the market using their walkers and motorized scooters. Food stamp recipients come to my information booth where I electronically remove money from an EBT card that they'll give me. In exchange, I give them coins. Silver coins are for fruits and vegetables only, and wood coins are your typical EBT coins. They purchase produce in addition to everything else. The everything else, as far as eligible EBT food that we sold this year includes meat, cheese, bread, honey, maple syrup, olive oil, flavored vinegar, baked goods, canned goods, and jams and jellies. All of that in addition to produce. Double Up Food Bucks is another program. That is a Field and Fork program that matches up to $20 a day so EBT customers can afford to buy produce. The wins are threefold. Low-income folks are eating better. Our local farmers are gaining new customers and making more money. The best part is our food dollars are staying in the region. I'm excited to live here, and I want to help Batavia craft its ideal market, which I see as a diamond in the rough. I can help build strategic relationships and garner fresh funds. I'm asking each of you for open dialogue so we can work collaboratively together on this. Moving the market, in my opinion, would hurt this community. Did you know that our market has been moved 11 times in 15 years? And just like any business, it takes at least two years to ramp back up to full capacity. Frankly, your farmers are weary, are rebuilding from scratch. Will you provide your guidance and help make the corner of Elvoid Place and Bank Street the market's forever home? Thank you. That's all.
Do you have to ask? Council response to public comments?
This one, the Just Kings Trunk Retreat, is looking to hold a candy giveaway on Friday, October 30th, at the Elvoid Place parking lot from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They will be doing a drive-through style now to keep their gatherings at a minimum.
We talked about their COVID plan?
Yeah, they've submitted their COVID plan, and per the request of our event application, they will be submitting a certificate of liability insurance, which is the operational process we go through with every event. We did reach out to the county Department of Health to make sure that the event was appropriate, and they did agree to move it to a drive-through style event, which is what many of the other community groups are doing, to keep contact to a minimum. So they were happy to comply with that. I know we have some of our police officers that'll be there as well to help them monitor, make sure there's no gathering over 50 people.
And you sent an email to all of us in reference to the state's guidelines on Halloween. How are we? What's the latest now? I mean, it seems like it changes by the minute.
So we have CDC guidelines, and we have New York State guidelines. A lot of the guidance is asking people to be creative and think differently how they conduct Halloween. From the top level, you cannot gather with more than 50 people. So that is the executive order, and that is our mandate. If you do go trick-or-treating, they're asking that you wear a mask, not just your costume mask, give groups six feet distance, and they're asking that residents not serve candy from their doors, but put it on a table in single-serve packages so people can pick it up for safety reasons. So that's the best guidance I have on Halloween.
Questions? Go ahead.
Briggs, open. Council, council, you can't charge a particular award. Who do they submit it to, or how many days are they trying?
Sure, prior to the event. So on the application...
The 30th Friday, I believe.
So they have to submit it prior to the event, and they submit it to the city clerk to be maintained with the entire application in the file.
Yeah, it's been like that for every event we've ever had. If insurance isn't submitted to me by the date of the event, then the event is officially not approved.
Automatically?
Yes, they know we don't have their insurance. They are not supposed to be forward.
And this only applies with city property. If someone was using, like, they were using Tops Parking Lot or something, they'd be up the tops to worry about. But because they're using a city parking lot, then it requires the safety of our liability, they have to carry the additional insurance.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else? So, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think it's very tough with the kids, especially with what's going on with COVID and everything else. At least the police department will be there at times, or will be there all the time. Charlie, is it going to be there all the time?
We're going to do our best to manage. We could have an extra patrol on that night, just do our staffing levels, but it's call volume specific, so if anything happens and we have to pull the officer, we'll have to pull the officer.
Right. I read that health department and CDC's suggestions over here. There's no way I can sit outside in the cold and hand out candy and, you know, leave with the mask and everything else. I know that for a fact. So I think this is a great event for them. Matter of fact, I give my candies the memo there so they can hand it out. Thanks.
Are they, is that when everyone is celebrating Halloween? Is the 30th on Friday? Or when is the normal?
Saturday is Halloween. Yep, and you will have a press release coming out to you tonight that was put out by the fire chief and the police chief with some guidelines. And the official hours for Halloween are 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's when we ask anyone that wants to do trick-or-treating to be out, doing trick-or-treating safely with masks and keeping their distance from each other. The real guidelines, we really have to be careful of, and things I guess I want the community to understand is that if you have a party at your house, even though it's under 50 people, there could be a spread there. And I know everyone's very weary and tired of COVID, but if we have an outbreak here in Batavia or Genesee County, we move into the governor's microcluster zones. So we could go to a yellow zone, and we'd start seeing businesses shut down again. We could go into the orange zone or rag where we're almost fully shut down back Halloween or in March. So, well, I know everyone's tired and doesn't want to hear it anymore and say, even if you have a party in your own home, I just ask that you ask your guests to wear masks and be responsible, and don't go somewhere if you're sick, because we can't afford our economy, our businesses can't afford to be shut down again. Thank you.
Ironically, we seem to be seeing more daily cases than we did in the middle of March when it was at its height, in a way. I mean, we'll have a few zeros, and there'll be like five.
And a lot of it comes from family or family and friends gathering, and now that we can't gather outside, you're inside, and you want to spend Thanksgiving and Christmas and Halloween together. And just ask that people be safe and conscious, and as silly as it sounds, when you invite people to your party, you should include COVID protocols so your guests all feel safe as well. I mean, I know it's difficult and it's frustrating. I've had multiple conversations with the accounting manager, but he reminded me that it's our business future we have to protect.
Anything else on that? So that moves forward, that automatically does move forward. As long as they get the insurance and everything is covered with, I don't see a problem with that. The next city council business meeting will be held Monday, November 9th at 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. Today, we have a public hearing for the Chapter 190, the zoning change for the industrial zone to allow the public garage special use permits. So I'll take a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Beely, seconded by Ms. Briggs. If you would come roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Public hearing is open. Does anyone want to speak on the zoning change? No one wants to speak? Take your motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Beely, seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Come roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
So that's where, that's why I'm a little concerned about having to you in November because it may take longer than that to negotiate the appropriate design fee and contract. So we'll go through the process of identifying the scope, exactly what we're going to ask them to do, how many hours we expect it to take to do that, and defining that, so that'll be in front of council. But there is a budget in mind of what that cost should be, and I expect to be added or underneath it.
Sam, will you take one of these there way with the big light?
That's it, that's it.
John, go ahead.
Matt, just, I had someone contact me today in regards to who is, who's making the decisions as to the alterations or the enhancements, if you will, of the square. How are we, how are we deciding what to do there and how to do it?
Through the DRI process, there was a general concept. Once we get the design professional on board, there will be several meetings with stakeholders, so we'll have the adjacent business owners, the Business Improvement District folks will certainly be in, one of those stakeholders, along with city staff, to determine what that path forward is. There'll be some public meetings to get input and to drive that forward.
So, just for example, if we have someone like the, the Ramble Music Festival, that's a major participant in Jackson Square every year, will they have an opportunity to maybe put some input in as to what they might think would be good for, for their event?
That would be actually one of the very first items, once we have a design professional on board, is identifying all of those stakeholders, so they are involved. So, and we'll be relying probably quite heavily on the bid to help us with that, but certainly all the adjacent business owners would be one, the city, the bid, people that are not adjacent to it, and then of course, some of the vendors that use the area, you know, the Ramble folks would be a very good example of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Is our, are we in consensus to move that forward, or consideration when we have all that paperwork and everything ready for us? So that'll go on a future business meeting? The Carrollwood Drive Extension?
So this year, we had an extension of a subdivision, which is Carrollwood Drive above the end of Narmer Drive, and that project, the, the street construction has been complete, the water line's in place, the sanitary sewers in place, the stormwater system is in place, the electric, and I believe the gas is also in place. One of the houses is close to completion, and there is five lots in total, so my understanding is there's been some interest, and it'll be new housing going up in the city of Batavia. So, the next step would be for the city to accept those improvements and then take responsibility. You know, it's important for us to be able to get up there and clog the street and make sure that the street's open and available as these houses get built, make sure the fire protection's available, has access to it, police protection, everything that goes along with that. So this is the step where the city accepts those improvements, they've all been installed, or installed by the developer at his cost, and then the, those improvements are turned over to the city to maintain for the future.
So, the way I understand this is that people, construction companies build these improvements and they do them under obviously certain codes and specs and whatever?
Yeah, we provide the engineering requirements, we give them our standard specification for the road section, the curb and gutter, the water main material, sanitary sewer material, any, any of that type of information, so they have to build to our spec. During the construction, my staff is there, not necessarily every day, but regularly to inspect the, the improvements, make sure they're being put in appropriately, waterline testing, sanitary sewer testing, we went through their video cameras and videoed the sewers to make sure everything is appropriate and needs a spec, and, you know, everything is good to go. It's been a very positive project, I would say.
Okay, so?
The developer, so here's Batavia Homes and Development, which is Bob Harroward did an awful lot of that area, now it's his son, John.
So they do the area, and then they're basically just turning it over to us for maintenance going forward?
Yep, right, and then there's serviceable lots that are developed for, you know, the, for new homes to be built and constructed, yep, exactly.
Okay, great. So, any questions on that?
No, they've been wanting to do this for years, going through that area.
No, I mean, I just like the idea that they paid for all the improvements, and then, you know, that's fine.
Right, they made themselves a lot.
What?
They did the money pay.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
And also, well, it makes two dead ends we have right now, so it brings it a, makes it a loop, so, I don't know if that's good or bad, if they'll get more traffic or less traffic, but...
But that's private, that's private industry, I mean, they thrive that, we get a road out of that, access, and people have a place to build their homes, and it didn't cost us really anything to improve that property, so that's, that's a good thing. So we're in consensus to move that forward to the business meeting for official vote? Ellicott Trail Project?
The Ellicott Trail Project is complete, this goes back, my gosh, probably five, six years, when this was the brainchild between the city and the town to apply for transportation alternatives programs funds, which they received. The town of Batavia was the administrator of the project, they drove basically all the construction, administered, oversaw all that, even areas in the city, and there was an inter-municipal agreement that the city and town would split the actual costs that were the local shares, so the non-federal funds, there was also some SAM money, which was grant money, I believe, from, through the state, as well as the county became an interested party as well, through the, the Duick Recreation Park on Cedar Street, so there's several areas and several municipalities were involved in creating this trail, it's been very well received and heavily used, which is all good stuff. The final accounting was done, the project was over in an amount that was required an additional $26,000, the city to, to meet its obligation of half that share, in addition to what was originally agreed. There are CHIPS funds available that are, will qualify, and our CHIPS, which is a Consolidated Highway Improvement Program funding, that, in the balance, that are, are not allocated, we have enough room to, to cover that in this cost, so there'd be no impact as far as, you know, budgetary impact, we have, we have a funding source that will allow for that, but this will essentially close the project out between the city and the town, and, you know, the project is essentially done.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Sam. When do you, when do you plan to proceed with the annual maintenance cost?
Yeah, well, probably no better a year from now. The, there's been, the, the stone dust, it's the, the trail material will be the, the item that will need probably an annual redressing, if you will, we do have a source of that with the town, it would be low or no cost, so I think the material aspect will be very minimal, but there will be some labor, we may, at some point, need to buy, you know, a piece of equipment, again, I don't think it'll be a high-cost thing to help us groom that trail a little bit. Once the trail matures, some of that will, will be lessened, I think, as well, right now, there's still a few areas where there's some relatively minor washouts, they were much more severe at the beginning, there's a little bit now, so I think every spring there's going to be, you know, several days where the crews will probably have to be out, kind of redress it, get it back into form, and add some stone dust to the area and fill those, anywhere there's washouts and that in the spring, and then probably halfway through the, the summer, I would guess, maybe another, maybe less heavy maintenance impact to it as well. So, I, I don't have a firm grasp on it, but I think it would be, in the spring, I would expect, you know, we'll be out there several days getting it in shape, and then probably once or twice after that throughout the summer, for a day here, a day there, you know, short of something specifically happening. But most of it's relatively low maintenance, there shouldn't be really like any mowing, the bridge is relatively maintenance-free, it's designed to have that patina, that rust look patina in status, it's not paint, or things like that to go along with it, so there'll be maintenance, but I, I don't think it'll be a huge financial burden, it'll be more of a, a time issue with staff, I would say.
And then, cities for co-sharing, so, Tom, how do we handle liability?
Uh, the city's liable for the parks in the city, and the town's liable for the parks in the town, so it's really just the, the municipal boundaries.
Thank you. Tom?
Just, I, I don't have a question, I just want to make a comment, that when this all, when we started this whole process, however many years ago it was, five years ago, there was, there was a number of naysayers that said, "What the heck do we need this trail for?" You know, what's this, what, what good is this, you know? And now, if you spend any amount of time on social media, that's all you hear is how great this trail is, and it's fast becoming the gem of our community, there's so many people that are utilizing this on a daily basis and just absolutely loving it, so, it's just, it's something that, that we had, you know, we had that, that vision at the beginning of something that could be really great in the community, that's well-used and well-liked, and it certainly is, is developing into that. I just, I just find it amusing that the naysayers all said, "We don't need this," and, of course, we don't need it, but it certainly is fast becoming something that we're, we're becoming known for.
That brings to mind another question. In 1974, '75, I lived in Anchorage, and the whole city had trails like this, but they were limited, you couldn't, you could ride a bicycle, some stuff, no powered machines, no snowmobiles, or anything, it's that, how we handle this?
That's great, it's not motorized, there's, at the bridge, at the bridges, you'll see there's actually bowards, they're removable, so if in emergency you could get through there, but no motorized equipment would fit through there, you know, even a side-by-side or, you know, four-wheeler type vehicle. You know, there's, people are going to abuse it, but the intent is that those are not allowed on the trail, it's, it's dawn to dusk, it's not, not open at night, so, you know, certainly the intent is that there's not motorized vehicles on it, absolutely.
I most really love that neighbors.
Yeah.
I think, I agree through the city, unarmed.
Yeah, well, I have to tell you, I, I walk in just about every day at, at lunch, and I come across a couple of snakes, which I wasn't real happy about, so there's a few critters out there, but usually it's good, but, you know, it makes me do the high step a little bit when I come across a little bear.
The only, the only complaint that I had was the county section from Cedar Street doesn't allow dogs.
Yeah.
So that's something that maybe we could look at in the future, I don't know, it's up to the county, it's their park, but I mean, that's one of the, one of the few things people complained about was, that one little section, they couldn't walk their dog, even on a leash, they just, no.
Yeah, the county park doesn't allow, you know, any dog.
But, and, once you get onto Main Street again, a dog can be used, so it's just that one section in the middle there, but that's something that, as time goes on, we can work things like that out.
We can work that out a little bit, I agree.
Yep. Any other questions for Matt and Ed? So, that's money coming out of the CHIPS, it's not going to come out of our fund balance or anything at this point, so are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Okay, thank you, that moves. Natural gas commodity contract?
So we just went up to bid for the city's natural gas, so this is the commodity that we're purchasing, the gas commodity, that the natural, national fuel gas is the delivery aspect of that, so our current three-year contract expires at the end of the year, we went up the bid and received a low bid from New Wave Energy Corporation out of Buffalo, New York, for a, a fixed price of $3.28 per decatherm, which is actually about eight cents a decatherm cheaper than what we had the previous three years, so we were very pleased with that. We also have another contract that we can purchase off directly, that has already gone through the, the vetting process, that we can just do a direct purchase from, their price was almost $3.90, so this is significantly cheaper than that, so we're very pleased with the pricing. Bill Davis, the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater, has done some diligence on this company, reached out to a couple of their, their customers, and both of them were very pleased with them, said there has not been any issue with the delivery or any cost, that was not how aligned as the original project, so we do recommend moving forward with awarding that New Wave Energy, the natural gas contract, the next three years.
Any questions? Okay, so we're in consensus to move that forward? The National Grid Corridor Grant?
Yep, so this is a housekeeping resolution. Back in 2018, council accepted a National Grid Urban Corridor Grant to improve the Ellicott Trail on behalf of Severino Companies, so behind the site where they will be building their project, the trail goes right through there, and the intent was to have decorative pavement, lights, and benches erected in that area, and National Grid was the granting agency. As we were looking through all our paperwork and coming towards a final close, we realized we hadn't budgeted for this or set account numbers for the revenue and expenses, so back in 2018, while it was approved, we hadn't done this, so this is a housekeeping revenue to recognize that.
You know what, you know when in 2018 that was?
It was Resolution Number 78, so...
Near the end?
Near the end of the year, maybe? I didn't, I don't think I brought that.
We were in transition at that point, is what I'm saying, we had a new city manager at that point, so I think it was just one of those things that just wasn't intentional, right?
No, not at all, not at all, the authorization to accept the National Grid Grant and to allow the council president to execute that and an undertaking agreement was all in order, we just didn't assign the account numbers. So we will be purely a pass-through, this will not affect our bottom line in any way.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, so we're in consensus to move that to the next business meeting for vote?
Yep.
Move forward. The LGS1 Retention and Disposition Schedule?
Um, I'll start this and let Heidi jump in at any point here, but the New York State Archives issued a new retention and disposition schedule for all records currently used in the city of Batavia. I asked Heidi to include it, but she told me it was a thousand pages, so I just, I did not do it. Heidi, if there's anything else you'd like to offer, I'll say this is issued so all departments know what the retention schedule of their records are and when they can dispose of them, and I'll let you fill in the rest.
It used to be called the MU1, standing for municipality, municipalities have their own, schools have their own, third districts have their own, counties have their own, this LGS just kind of combines all of them, since a lot of the retention was the same for all of those agencies or organizations, so this is just kind of a consolidation, it hadn't been changed, I think, since 2003, so it's just a, kind of a reorganization of that schedule. It was officially released August 1st, and we just had to adopt it before the end of the year, when the MU1 will expire, and then we have to start using the LGS1, but we can use it as soon as it's adopted. Again, there's no, no real changes from what we're using now, it just very clearly identifies how long we have to keep things.
What's the LGS designation, what is that?
Um, local government...
System, services, something like that? Storage?
I just print, I just put it in the folder.
I was just curious, I mean...
Something with local government standards, maybe, I, I don't remember the S, sorry.
That's all right, I just was curious. So this basically is going to, like, kind of more consolidate all that disposal instead of having separate ones?
Instead of having separates for schools, counties, local municipalities, it's kind of putting it all together, so instead of using our MU1 schedule, we'll now use the LGS1.
Any, any questions on that?
Schedule, local government schedule.
Thanks. Thank God for internet connection. Any questions on that today? Okay, so we're in consensus to move that forward, to be adopted and voted on, I mean, and adopted.
I mean, are you through with that, because I overlooked something over here on this Ellicott Trail for the lighting over there, and that was the cost of that, for $250,000, and...
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
I overlooked something.
Go ahead, bring it up, go ahead. Go ahead.
On the grant application over here for the $250,000 for the Ellicott Trail, and it bothers me to think that Severino is going to do it in his company simply because of the fact we're still waiting for Ellicott Street over there to be, you know, built and everything else, are we going to have to wait seven, eight years for it?
Do you want to cover that, because obviously, this is, the housekeeping part was to...
Thank you.
It was a grant?
Yes.
And the grant is coming in and going out, it was part of their original plan, but let Rachel explain.
Right, so it's part of their original plan, it's part of their financing sources, and it was the old BDC director, Julie Piccatti, who had worked with National Grid along with Jason Molino, to secure this as part of an enhancement to Ellicott Trail, so, again, the city acts as a pass-through agency, and Severino is responsible for doing all of the work, once it's done, we will help them get the money through National Grid, we don't have any outlay of money from the city for this project, the only way that they can access these grant funds is to complete the trail and the specifications to what they submitted to the National Grid application.
We put in specifications, yeah. Specifications concerning a period of time to complete this, or are we going to wait another seven years or whatever?
So, I don't know, I don't have the grant with me, um, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I, I believe what that does, it's part of a, an adjacent parking area that would get used for the resurgence and the Severino development, and also serve as a parking area for use of the Ellicott Trail, and I think there's some lighting that goes along with that as well, but I think it's part of the parking area that would be available for public parking for people utilizing the Ellicott Trail right there by, near Evan Street.
Are you going to be, like, the retirement person, Rosemary's going to oversee this? Well...
Well, it's, it's part of the grant application, and it's part of Severino's original design, has this in there.
Yeah, we can't stay at the top of this one.
I'll, I'll come in. Here you go.
Rosemary, as I understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, this was all part, he, he has multiple funding sources there, which is his business, so one of them was this grant, and he applied for this grant saying he would do a specific number of things, apparently, like Matt said, put in a parking lot, create some lighting, and allow that parking lot to be used for people that want to just use the trail, and not necessarily go to the brewery or live in one of those apartments there. So, that was given to them by that corporation, gave them the money, for him to do it that specific way as he applied for it. We voted on it, we approved it, because we had to be like within that grant application as well, so it passed through us to him. For some reason, we never accounted for that money coming in from that corporation, and that money then getting paid out, and he upped it as part of the bargain, so that's, all this is just housekeeping to create that line item so that we can accept the money and then give it right back out, if he meets all the criteria and they authorize, yes, he did what he said he was going to do based on the plan he submitted, now we can release that money to him. So that's one of his many sources of funding, there's other cleanup grants and a bunch of other stuff he's doing, that, you'd have to take that up with him.
Well, my point is, you know, like, it's been waiting years for that formula to be developed, and, you know, what the hell, we're up in the air, and we're still up in the air, and, you know, I just want to make sure that this is going to go through, I mean...
Well, if it doesn't, the money goes back to the corporation and it doesn't go to him, and at the same time, from what I understand, and the reports we've been getting publicly and whatever, he is moving forward, and COVID kind of slowed things down for some of the funding sources he is getting, so, he's, he's intending to move forward.
Well, thank you for allowing me to go back.
Yeah, no problem, we, I, we all physically even get the money before we just prove it in COVID.
It does pass through, well...
It's a pass-through deal.
Yes, because that's why we assign it account numbers, yes, so it will pass through us, and, just to the other point, they're looking to close in December or January, and a close on a deal like this means every single financial piece has to be together, and they can't construct until they close, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do a home improvement without closing your bank financing, I guess, is another way to look at it. So, at the next conference meeting, you'll see another resolution coming through for a Restore New York Grant in the amount of $500,000 that was applied for by the city back in 2017 and awarded, but we've never finalized that grant, that's to restore the brewery portion, so, just so you know, at the next conference, you will see another resolution, and then another undertaking agreement, because the same thing, this comes from Empire State Development, passes through us directly to the project, and they have to complete the project prior to the money being issued to them, so, they are moving forward, I know, I know it's...
You'll see a lot of progress now, that everything seems to be in order, you'll see a lot of progress.
Well, it would behoove him to, to want to do that rather quickly once his development is up, because that trail is right there, through his property, so he probably wants to, that's why he probably wanted to do it originally, he wants to enhance the trail, because it's going to be right there with the beer garden and, and his restaurants and things like that, so...
So, I mean, it's kind of, I, I will agree with you, it's been too long, but sometimes these good, these good things take a long time to develop, and there's things beyond our control that pop up and slow things down, and he's been assuring us that he's moving forward, and he looks like he is at this point, so, we'll wait and see.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're back to the disposition of the records, so we in favor to move that out, I'm not even sure. Stop DRI grant on our work?
Thank you, council president, members of council, so, coming for you is an award for additional stop DRI funds that came through Genesee County, Genesee County's the pass-through for the state stop DRI program, we have been awarded $5,000 in additional funds that will help us do high-visibility road checks, saturation controls, et cetera, during specific times of the year, so this is called crackdown, and they refer to crackdown periods of the year where these funds can be spent.
Any questions?
Sean, do you think crackdowns, if you would issue a DIRS, they just issue them in terms of...
Uh, generally speaking, most DIRS are all appearance-based, no matter when they're funded.
Anything else? I kept trying to get in, it kept getting interrupted, I thought I'd give you a chance.
Give me a chance when I don't have anything to say.
Okay, so, we're in consensus to move that forward. Okay, permission to accept the Rotary Grant and amend the youth bureau budget?
Good evening, I'm here because Rotary approached us at, actually at the end of last year, the calendar year, and the beginning of this new year, about some funding that would be available to expand outdoor recreation for city residents and city youth in particular through summer rec and youth services. It is a matching grant between our district and the local club at the amount of $6,000, and it will be used to purchase kayaks and paddles and life jackets, as well as a launch to put in at Duick Park, so it will be a collaborative effort with the city and the county.
Any questions?
No questions, just that it's really nice that they're going to do this, it's about time, it's just...
Well, the odd part about it is, it's the county park, how is the city involved in this?
Well, we looked at, when, when I was first approached about all of this, we looked at Kibbe Park down the creek, I spoke with Ray Ward as well as Matt Worth back then, about the possibility of utilizing the creek and the launch there, I got a lot of history in regards to a potential boat launch that was being pursued back in 2005, a month ago, and got all of the plans from Ray Ward, and it was decided that it was not really a safe place for us to do it, it's still close enough to literary center and the, the whole base of the youth center, so that we could rock kids there, and the Y is our collaborative partner, so they have the certified lifeguards that would then accompany a staff person and the youth in order to kayak and do some STEM education. So Paula Osborn was brought on from the county parks department, who's our park supervisor there, and they already have boat launch, this launch that we will add will allow for any young person or any adult to get in safely without feeling unsteady in the kayak.
What about someone with disabilities who had that?
Same thing, yes, yeah.
I think it's important, I mean, so they could, you know, be free to, you know, use their wheelchair or whatever, and then get into a kayak without having any help.
They could, yeah, you actually grab it and you can mow yourself in, and it sits, the kayaks will sit on cars underneath, and then you can slide yourself out into the water.
And a little safer than the flooding and all that occurs in Kibbe Park in the spring and the fall and everything.
You can't see the creek anymore. Can't see anything.
No, it's, well, and it's, a lot of the trees are...
Same watch.
And it's very deep there, which I, I learned during this whole process as well, as a part of...
So, the only thing is, wouldn't it be better if the county made this application and then did it for, or are they going to be part of this too, are they going to...
They're going to be part of it, with probably an agreement with the equipment moving forward, but we're agreeing to the city use it, not the county use it.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, this is a housekeeping resolution, that everything will be donated over to the county to maintain at the end of the project, so we will be using our help to move the grant through, but they, because of that, their park, they will own the boat launch and the equipment, which they will haul right on site.
They will have us right down the street at the highway department, they're looking at us, the trailer, that will be able to haul the kayaks back and forth.
Oh, great.
So, yeah.
So you'll make an appointment to bring the kids over, they'll have it set up for you, that, they'll remove it and safely store it, whatever.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Bob?
Yeah, is this going to be an out-of-water kayak launch, commercially made?
Yeah, and I couldn't tell you the company that I got, Paula Osborn, but yeah.
I just want to, yeah, because I've seen them, I've been involved in something, you know, it, it serves, it's all clients, I mean, handy, you know, everybody, it just makes it so much easier, but I've seen some homemade launches.
Yeah, it's, it's homemade.
Okay, any other questions? So we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting for vote? Okay, move forward. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Beely, follow the roll, please.
Call someone over to the alley?
Yes.
Meganus?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Greg Beely?
Yes.
Jamie Fajkowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.